You're on record.
Okay.
For a second. You're on the record, Chairman. So here we are. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4 there six at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Ready.
Yes.
Mr. Willings.
Here.
Chairman Ira Kane.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Right.
And our new board engineer, but I'm not sure how you say your last name.
Tom Lemannowitsch.
Lemannowitsch. Mr. Lemannowitsch.
Start off the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united in this vote, liberty and justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and seen none. Do we have any correspondence, Nora?
No correspondence, just resolutions.
Okay, we have one resolution.
We have two.
Two of them.
Hmm, no, the second one is in draft form. Just the one. Application 2317, Berkowitz, Grignani, Petty, Ready, and Willings. Someone want to move that?
Some more.
There's a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion, Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani. Yes, Soskowitz. Oh, sorry, he's not here. Petty.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Whatever happened with the side entrance that looked like a shed on this property? Did he make it smaller or?
I thought.
Anybody remember?
That was in the resolution, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Why didn't?
It's in the resolution. The board had imposed a number of conditions on approving that particular portion.
Okay.
If you recall, there was a condition that he sided correctly, that he finished it correctly, that it painted to match the house, and that he installed a window on the street-facing sign, which is all incorporated in the resolution.
And put some landscaping into it.
Okay. I know the next to their neighbor was concerned. Okey-dokey. Application 2342, J. Sri Patel, this is, uh, case has been carried from December 20th.
Before you do that, can I just swear in the vote of pressure?
Oh, yeah, sure, go right ahead.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand? Swear from any testimony that you give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Swear from the testimony given this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Okay.
How many years have you done that?
So, this case was carried because of some issues about drainage, as I saw from looking at the tape. Is there additional testimony that you have tonight that, uh?
No, so I think all the confusion and everything like that was laid out with, uh...
Do you understand, you were sworn in the last time you were there, correct?
Yes, yes.
Do you understand that you're still under oath?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, nothing has changed, it's just the proposed, I think there was a confusion on all that, so it was all taken care of with engineering and gen, so should be, because everything is staying as is, it was just replaced from concrete to paper, so.
So if I understand it correctly, your original application seemed as though you were expanding some various sidewalks and patios, but you're not actually doing that, correct?
Yeah.
So is it correct that all you're doing is replacing what was there already that had become deteriorated?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There any other, any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions on the testimony given? I know it's brief testimony, but if you were here at the 12:20 meeting, there was some testimony. No, okay. There are any, you, you, there's nothing else you'd like to say, right?
No, sir.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and seen none. Men with requests?
Yeah.
Gentlemen and ladies?
Replacing adjacent conditions.
Please, never. Someone frame a resolution, please.
Application 23:42, J. C. Patel, 8 Ridgewood Avenue, Block 582, Lot Number 25, Zone R-4, Issue or granted C variance to construct a sidewalk expansion, front walk expansion, shed on existing wayovers, and legalize a walkway and reiterate your contrary to Section 430-10C and Section 430-35, Column 8, 10, and 13.
Sergeant. Any discussion, Nora, call the roll.
I'm sorry, you seconded it?
Willings.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willings.
Yes.
Results of variance is granted, I guess you can continue what you're doing, you'll get a zoning permit as soon as we approve the resolution, which should be in two weeks.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's fine. I'm thinking, I'm with the next meeting, I'm losing it, I am losing it. I spend my whole day packing the dining tray, that's what I do.
What are we doing next here? The, um, Klein Outdoor Advertising, Mr. O'Neill? We've heard it before, because I've got notes on you.
We're supposed to come back to somewhere demonstrating.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joseph O'Neill, here on behalf of Klein Outdoor Advertising. This is a continuing matter, we are back again to give more testimony regarding illumination from the sign. Couple other issues. With your permission, I'd like to get right into the engineering.
Go right ahead, Mr. O'Neill.
Still under oath?
You have a floor.
Just for the record, could you just reintroduce yourself?
Oh, sure. William Hart Vogt Jr. from L2A Land Design of the site.
And you were sworn in the last time, correct? And you understand you're still under oath, correct?
Correct. Mr. O'Neill, before we go into the lights, do we want to reiterate the things that were reduced the last meeting, height, sizes, things of that order?
Well, we can run through that with, uh...
With Mr. Vogt.
Yes, yeah. We've got some exhibits along those lines, too, about the height, things like that.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, so what we were proposing was a dual-sided or V-shaped billboard, it's digital, there's a message sign of both sides. What we are proposing is a 14-foot-tall by 48-foot-wide sign, that's 672 feet, square feet. The height, the overall height from the ground to the top of the sign, 55 feet tall.
Fifty-five?
Excuse me?
Fifty-five, correct.
I, I heard the tape, and I thought it was changed from 60 to 45 feet.
We need to get into that.
We were, uh, we were originally at, um, we were originally at 60 feet.
Right.
We had submitted plans to at 50 feet, or at the last year, we had spoke about being at 50 feet, we did a, uh, we did a test at the site, we basically did a crane test at the site, and due to the trees on, uh...
Why don't we, why don't we put that up?
Sure.
You have a photo exhibit showing what we're talking about.
Yes, I did. So, I can just switch to...
You're gonna need to mark that.
They can't hear you in the back. You're gonna puff in your mic.
Okay.
Is that on?
I don't think it's on. Okay. I think it's on now. It's on? Nope. It's on, but it's not, are those working?
Yeah.
Oh, you know what, you have it on me. We had it on us. We're not depressed, uh, this button happened to us.
Sure. Okay, so basically, when we...
You were marking A7.
A7? Okay.
You were acknowledging that we did talk about looking at this going down the 45 feet, you're kind of skipping a little too far ahead.
Sure, we did, we did throw around a couple of numbers there, um, 50, 45 foot, we, we basically hung a, uh, an object at the site, and at the 45 and 50-foot mark, it was too low to be visible, um, from the southbound direction, so the right-hand read, because of the trees, uh, to the south of the site. To the north of the site, I'm okay, um, with the, with the height, it's, it's the southbound read is what's driving the 55-foot-tall. So...
So we're back to 55?
We're back to 55, correct.
And you're back to needing a variance for it?
Correct.
A big variance.
Correct.
Are we, are we still removing trees, or is that...
We will be trimming trees on the neighboring parcel to the south of us.
But not in the right-of-way?
Uh, to my knowledge, not in the right-of-way, it would be on the neighboring parcel where we had looked at putting the sign.
I had a note from last time that you were contemplating clearing within the right-of-way, you are not.
No, I don't, I don't foresee clearing in the right-of-way. Um, I'll, I'll put up a picture.
A8.
This is from the, this is from the test that was done. Believe that. So, A8 is the northbound, or the left-hand read, as you're driving, you're looking to the left, and that is the proposed perspective of the proposed sign at the 55-foot height. So you can see there's a faint red line along the right-hand side of the image, and at the very top is our number of 55 foot in height. So that is 55 feet above the grade of the subject property. I-287 is another, on average, 33 feet lower than our site.
So it's 85 feet above the 287 length.
On average, correct. From our site. So I can, I can, if you guys want to see that a little closer, I can certainly hand that over to you.
Does that photo reflect topping of any of the trees, or not?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Does that photo reflect any topping of the trees?
No, it does not.
To the north, I guess you said.
No.
Can you show us a southbound picture like that? Because you're saying you have to go that high, what are, because of the southbound trees?
Yes, the, it's, it's all trees, I don't have a picture from the southbound, but it's, it's all trees, that's, we were just showing you a picture of trees.
So it'll still be all trees even at this height?
Correct.
So you won't have view from the southbound?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's not visible for southbound traffic? Ever? It's obstructed by the, by the trees on the neighboring parcel, so we would have to trim...
What about at 55 feet, at 55 feet, you're okay?
No.
So you'll never, it'll never work from the southbound side?
I need to trim trees on the southbound side, correct.
Do you need, do you need approval from the, uh...
The adjacent property owner?
Yes.
Yes, and we have that.
And no other, uh, no other authorizations are needed?
It would just be...
For you to take down trees, or to cut trees, or trim trees?
We're not, we're not cutting down trees, it would just be trimming of trees.
Trimming the trees.
Yeah, trimming, pruning.
You need to help me here a little bit.
Sure.
The trees that are blocking the southbound view, you don't have a picture for us, you're saying you're gonna trim the trees, can you tell us about how much you're gonna trim them?
We would...
How much you have to cut off the trees so the southbound traffic can see your sign?
That's a very good question. It would be, it, we would be topping some of the trees in that, in that view shed. I, I don't honestly have...
We need to know.
I don't have an eye...
You don't know the height of the trees?
I don't, I mean, that, the adjacent property is also on a slope away from the site as well, so it's, it's a variable of different...
What your testimony is, is you'll trim the trees to the level you have to so your sign is visible from the southbound.
That's correct.
And that could be pretty significant.
Yeah, it's not gonna...
We have something in writing from the neighboring property, saying that he's agreed to this?
No, not at this time, he has verbally agreed with our, with the applicant, and we would provide that to the board, should you see fit to approve this application.
So can be a condition?
Yes.
One of the concerns was the homes across the highway, but now we're back at 55 feet, do we know whether we're gonna see this from the residential neighborhood to the west and the south of this?
I'm just putting back the aerial, that was Exhibit A1. So, you're, I believe you're referring to the relatively new development.
Townhouses over there.
Correct.
Right, that, that we discussed last meeting, I think we started to talk about how to shield the bulbs individually so that it would not, uh, be direct view, but now the thing is 55 feet in the air, and the holes in the lower right-hand corner of that exhibit, I have no idea, will, will they see that sign from there?
Now you're back to A7.
Yeah, let me go back to...
Because the townhouses across the way, you were demonstrating it was somewhat perpendicular to them, and that you would be able to, I, I...
Redirect the bulbs.
Yeah, I, I refer to them as cups or...
Shielded bulbs.
Part of the bulb you can see is when you're coming down the highway. Now, this case, however, the flat surface of the billboard will be to the south.
Okay, as you put that up, let me ask a question while we go forward, make sure we're apples and apples. This chart was done when it was, at what, what height were you expecting that to be at that time?
This is at the 55.
This is, so this is the current...
Correct.
Proposal.
That's correct.
This is a reflettery of the light.
That's correct, and this, this is, this is just the picture from the lighting report that was submitted to the board as part of the application, so this is, this is basically the, um, this is the south, this is southbound, well, this is facing the southbound, uh, direction. So, this is the lighting study.
Is that part of A7?
Yes, this is part of A7, it was just a larger, it was just a larger picture, that's all.
So let's mark, let's mark this new one as A8.
Okay.
A8 is this, you described this for...
This would be A9.
A9, yes.
So, let's go back to A7, because I don't think we identified, we described A7 for the record, is A7 excerpt from the lighting study? Correct. A7 is the three excerpts from the lighting study, you have the...
I do not believe that lighting study was submitted.
I don't, I don't think it was.
No, I don't think so.
So you just... Okay, so we had a lighting study, uh, prepared at the 55-foot height for the 14-by-48 billboard that we're proposing. So the images that we have here are the, uh, different viewpoints of the billboard, so the first, on your left-hand side, that would be the southbound or the right-hand read, uh, for the, for the project. This, this direction is where we have the, uh, encumbrance of the trees facing us, so you can see, um, the line of trees on the, uh, property to the south of us, um, that we're gonna trim. The middle picture, that is the northbound or the left-hand read. That, that is the picture that we're showing you on the perspective, which was A8.
I have it from the last time.
Oh, okay.
Heard the kids.
And then the, the, basically the rings that you see in each direction are the different lighting intensities at a certain distance away from the, away from the sign. During the day or at night? This is at nighttime, uh, this is nighttime level, uh, where the billboard dims to 3% of its output, during the day it runs at 100%, because it's competing with the sun, during the nighttime hours, it dims down to 3% of its output, and what these graphs and distances are showing you are the lighting or illumination levels at the ground above ambient light, so they're not factoring in any light source, it's as if this is the only, uh, object that's, uh, illuminated, so... And what are the numbers on there? Sure. So, these rings, it starts, uh, at the center of the board, it's 100 foot, 200 foot, 300 foot, 400 foot, and then 500 foot, you have this flip, you have the same in the opposite direction. So the most intense, uh, light level is at the zero degree, degree angle with the center of the board. As you feather out to different angles, 20, 40, 60, and whatnot, the light dims down because you're not focused at the center of the, of the, um, screen, so... So the center of the dot is, is as if you were staring straight at the billboard and standing right at the billboard, is that correct? At the different, at the different distances, so there's 100, 200, and so on and so forth to 500 foot. Okay, but the center of the dot is, is as if the billboard was right in front of your face?
It's the billboard.
Correct, but we, we have trend, we have taken that level down to the ground level at basically five feet above ground, so that's, that's on average, the average eye level of, of a person. So, I'm gonna give you the, the most intense reading, that's at the zero-degree mark, okay? So at 100 feet, you would be, this is at the ground level, at .68-foot candles, at 200 feet, you'd be at .17-foot candles, at 300 feet, you'd be at .08-foot candles, 400 feet, you'd be at .04-foot candles, and at 500 feet, you'd be at .03-foot candles. So what this is showing you is the, the purpose of the billboard is not to illuminate or cast illumination onto the ground, it, it's, it does not act as if it's a light in this room, or a parking lot, a light that's lighting up a parking lot. The sign just has luminance so the message can be read. So, the light trespass from this board at the ground level is very low, and this is, this would be as if this was the only object illuminated in a dark sky. So when you add in any ambient lighting from streetlights, car lights, from other properties, this is the worst-case scenario that we're, that we're showing you, is that we would be .68, .17, .08, .04, .03 above that ambient light. Is it possible for you to describe that in a more layman's term, instead of foot candles, like, could you give us a, an example of what that might look like? Sure. Like this room, you're probably, if I had a, if I had a light meter right here, you'd probably be somewhere in the 40 to 50-foot candle range. Okay? For typical parking lot, uh, lighting...
Forty to 50?
Correct. In this room, easily.
Four or five maybe?
Easily. So in the parking lot, you're typically gonna see lighting levels, you're gonna have a minimum of .5-foot candles, to somewhere in the range of two to three-foot candles, depending on what the use is.
So to Mr. Don, the point being, you're saying this room is four to, forty, forty, four to five?
Oh, easily.
And the highest level you're gonna be there is what?
.068.
But I, I don't think it's the issue of light being, lighting up the area around the sign, I think it's the surface of the sign, and whether you're gonna be able to see that from your, from your home or not, and to what degree it will be, um, impacting the neighborhood.
Yeah, the, the lights are shielded, right?
The lights are shielded.
That's what I was getting to, the, I, I think we talked about the shielding of the individual bulbs...
Correct.
For the residents across the highway.
Correct.
So they would not be able to really see the bulbs, and they should not be seeing the surface.
So...
Homes that are south of Indiville, the other aerial you had shows where they're located, and then that's that lower right-hand corner.
This one?
Yeah, those are all the homes. And I don't know whether or not we're gonna be enough distance away so the billboard will be really just a little spot in the, in the horizon, or whether it's gonna be something that is significant.
Mr. Chadwick, weren't you also mentioning about louvers going on the sign and putting cups on the lights?
I changed the term to a cup.
Okay, instead of louvers?
Louvers are, were the wings that were going on the, into the billboard.
Okay, we've changed that to cups now.
No, cups were going around the ball.
It's a louver, let's use louver.
Louvers?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it technically possible to direct the louvers on the sign so that it's only visible to the motorists on Route 287? Is that technically possible? So, uh, that, that's also a very good question, so, this, this billboard from Watchfire, that's the manufacturer, this is what they call 140-degree viewing angle, you have 70, 70 degrees on either side of the zero access point. They do make another version that is a 60% viewing angle, so that's, that brings you to the 30%, 30-degree on both sides. However, if you have visibility of the front of the board, you're gonna see it. It's, it will block out, if you're beyond the 60-degree mark, you will not see a message on that sign.
And that's all industrial in that area, where you were just pointing to?
Correct. So anything beyond the 60-degree mark, you will not have a visual of the sign, it cuts off, if you're at a too steep of an angle looking at the board. But if you're, if you're within the cone, you see the sign? If you're, if you're within, if you're within, basically from 0 to 40, that, that is the prime viewing angle, and then once you get beyond 40, it will start to deteriorate for you. That's why they do manufacture a board that is a 60-degree, 30 degrees in each direction, um...
Well, the problem here, as we were talking about at the last hearing, is that the, the new residential development is within that cone across the street.
The 60-degree cone.
Yeah, there's no way that some of those people, if they can see through the trees, will be able to see the sign.
And the lowest you could go technically is, technologically, is 60-degree angle, that's, that's the lowest they manufacture? Correct, third on each side.
That'll have no effect on those...
I thought the louvers were going to block the direct vision to the bulbs for the townhouses.
The head on, no, it was only, there's no way to block that.
No, there's, there's nothing that, there's nothing, it would, it only blocks the side. Now, there's louvers on the top and the bottom, which direct the light forward and not up or down. or down. They can, they basically inset the diodes into the, the actual panels, and they turn them. That's how you get the tighter angle. But, like I said, if you can see the board, if you're, whether I make it 60 degrees on either side or 30 degrees on either side, if you can, if you're within that visual frame and you can see the board, you will see the message.
Yeah, there's no, I, I could see some confusion in everybody's faces when they're talking about.
And you can't, you can't adjust the up-down. Let me ask this question. So the sign is above the highway by 85 feet, I think it was said, and it's also above the townhouses across the street, correct? You know, the relative, just, the relative height between the sign and the townhouses? Do you know that?
You're, well, we don't, but the townhouses appear to be at some point sunken in below the highway, the buildings for foundations.
So there's no way to point it down to hit the highway and then not hit the townhouses?
Yeah, I just wanna be clear about that. If you're seeing it from a car on the highway...
You're gonna see it from the townhouses.
Just step out of the car, onto the shoulder, you're at the townhomes or whatever they are, you're gonna see it there too. There's no way to get visibility to the roadway and not have visibility to that building.
And, and also with, without having visibility to the houses on Intervale, in the, in the area of Intervale. That's also not possible technically.
Well, that, I think we have to look at the angle of that.
Can you, can you go through that? Can you explain whether with the, with a smaller angle, you would eliminate the town, the houses in the Intervale area from being able to see the sign? Is that...
Yeah, that's, that's where the six, the 70 to 60 degrees makes a difference.
If, if the 30 degrees takes it out?
Yes, can you, can you go through that?
Takes it out? Um, yeah, I'm just trying to see if I have a picture that's, that, that's far enough for you on there. Um, I, I could probably do that, sure.
Take a minute to look at that. I could just have one minute while he's looking that up.
Sure, one minute, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something else is there.
Just turn it off.
Just stop, stop looking at it.
Doors have been pattered.
Yeah, you can't, oh, stop.
See it.
He's done a whole lot.
You're gonna see it too.
I don't know, it's by Intervale, right, John?
Home's by Intervale?
Yeah.
I don't know how far it is away from it. I mean, this is a point in time where, yeah, you can see the billboard, but it's half a mile away.
You can't read it.
I think it's half a mile.
About half a mile.
Quarter of a mile, though.
Mr. Chad?
I was always told if you've got your plans out on the table, if you're measuring them with your tools, it's probably a good time to ask for this matter to be carried so we can get some more specific answers to some of the particular questions, especially Ms. Graniani's question about how much of these trees are gonna be topped on the southbound side. I think that question is also probably pregnant on this side. So, I noticed that the board is a little, we're down to six here voting tonight, so we would probably ask that this matter be carried at the end of testimony. I'd like to ask that now so we could actually get that study into your hands that they were talking about. You have a chance, Mr. Chadwick, to go over that. So, I request this matter be carried.
But, but, can you provide the distance of the billboard to the homes along the south side of Intervale?
Yes.
So we've got a relationship with this bill, facing this billboard to those homes?
On the south side of Intervale.
Yeah, there's no homes on the north side?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah.
Yeah, I, I have no idea how far it is from there to your billboard location. I mean, we can, all of us can guess, but...
We, we'll get that specifically for you. I thought we had provided...
The same, the same thing to the townhomes, and as well as the orientation of the structures. Because if they're 90 degrees to the road, their view to the highway is vastly different than if they are parallel to the road and looking up.
Yeah, well, you know, what we're talking about with these 30 degrees on each side of this billboard, if we start turning the billboard to lose, say, the townhomes, are we picking up the houses with less screening on the other side?
That's why I'm asking you to look.
Yeah, we have to.
If they're a half a mile away, which they aren't, but looking at a billboard a half a mile away as opposed to a few hundred yards is a big difference.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think we need to come back with a little clearer presentation.
And the other thing, I'm totally lost on the louvers now. You're telling me that the bulb is recessed into the face of, mounting face? That's how it works?
How about we, as part of what we're providing, we provide the detail of what we're talking about there, so you can actually see?
So we could see where the louver works?
I understood these things are almost like a blinder on a horse.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. There's a louver on the top and the bottom.
Of each bulb?
Correct. On each group of, of diodes, there's three together. There's a, a red, green, and, and a white. Red, green, and a photo, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna come back with the detail.
Correct.
So what we're asking for right now is a...
Right, so what they do on those bulbs...
What I'm trying to ask for is a...
May 8th.
May 8th.
Thank you. We ask that be done without further notice?
Do I have a motion to carry this case to May 8th without further notice and with whatever extensions are required?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, if you're here for the Klein Outdoor Advertising Case 23, Home in 10, you will not receive any further notice that the meeting will be on May 8th. So you're gonna stay in the chair, aren't you, Mr.? You're not even gonna move, are you?
So if you're here for this case, folks, and you wanna leave?
I don't think you're here for this case. I'm here for the Coachman case, to be honest with you. Alrighty, well, if you're ready, Mr. O'Neill, Case 2357 Royal Coachman, 99 and 119 Cherry Hill Road. Preliminary and final site plan, devariance to construct the garage and outdoor storage of vehicles.
Was it 119?
Yeah.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neill here on behalf of Royal Coachman. Now, this is an application for utilization of existing parking lot at 99 and 119 Cherry Hill Road. The reason we're before you this evening is because their offices are on one lot, and they're proposing utilizing the parking lot on the other lot. So it's not directly an accessory, it's an accessory on a different lot that is a use fair.
And you don't need any C variances, correct?
No, no C variances at all. Park, plentiful parking. All the setbacks are previously approved. There's really no changes to the parking lot except for some restriping that we're gonna be talking about. And they're proposing putting in a garage, which we'll show you some details on shortly, for storage of some cleaning materials that'll help them prep some of those vehicles that are gonna be parked there for use. We're gonna get some of that operational testimony from my first witness, Mr. Jeffrey Carthahenna.
Okay, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm testimony you're about to give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you state your name and spell your last name?
My name is Jeffrey, my name is Jeffrey Carthahenna. My last name is C-A-R-T-A-G-E-N-A.
Mr. Carthahenna, could you please let the board know your position?
Sure, I'm a partner executive vice president at Royal Coachman.
How long have you been at that position?
About 11 years now.
So can you describe for us what Royal Coachman does?
We are a chauffeured ground transportation company, providing services to majority of corporations and private individuals as well.
Could you please speak closer to the microphone?
Sure, can you hear me better now?
Very, thank you very much.
So we are chauffeured ground, we're a chauffeured ground transportation company. We provide transportation to corporations and to private individuals as well. We've been in business for 50 years.
So not really a taxi company, but one of the things you're gonna be providing out of this location are shuttle services for local businesses in the area, isn't that true?
Correct, yes. For example, one of the shuttles we provide is for Marada, which is a new resident here in Parsippany. We provide a shuttle from their office here in Parsippany to Putin. So we do that every day back and forth, and we provide transportation for their employees.
And those similar services for other entities in the area?
Yeah, we conduct a lot of businesses with a lot of the companies here in Parsippany and other pharmaceutical or financial or insurance-related companies throughout the state of New Jersey.
Now, you're more than just a New Jersey-based company, right?
Correct, that is correct. We have our headquarters in Valhalla, New York.
So your services are provided all across North Jersey out of this location?
Correct, we provide services throughout all of New Jersey, into Pennsylvania. We provide services in New York. We provide services in Connecticut.
So what is it you're proposing to do on this parking lot now? It's an existing parking lot that hasn't been really utilized because the buildings are vacant.
Correct, there's a low occupancy at the, at the buildings. This particular site was appealing to us because of the parking opportunity here. We're allowed to have our vehicles here. We'd like to create a garage or a shed that allows us to prep the vehicles in the inclement weather, and that's what we're looking to have approved today.
And by prep, we mean just cleaning? There's no...
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
It's not a garage?
No, it's prep. We have two porters, and their job is to prep the vehicles, to make sure the vehicles are clean and up to certain standards.
And this is just for storage of materials? There's no offices there?
No, no, our offices are located in 99 Cherry Hill.
So when they, for instance, report in in the morning, they're reporting into 99 Cherry Hill Road, they're going out to take care of the cars?
Correct.
That's pretty much all that's gonna be going on there?
Correct.
How many cars are you gonna be storing?
Um...
Maximum?
Yeah, I think it's about 20 vehicles. Um, I'm not sure, it really depends on the time of year, what's going on. We also have shuttle accounts where we keep the vehicles located at the corporation. So for one example would be Bristol Myers Squid is another one of our accounts. Our vehicles stay on their property for the most part, and they come back if there's, you know, they're closed for a holiday or something like that.
And when they're all back there, how many you got on that site?
Um, it would, you know, it could be anywhere from 10 to 15 to 20.
10 to 20?
Yeah, yeah, it depends. Like Seton Hall University is another one of our accounts. So, you know, when that account is closed, we'll bring the vehicles back for some time. But it's usually not all at the same time, because they're closed for the summer for, for school, while BMS may close for the new year.
So if all your clients close, how many vehicles will you have in your fleet for Royal Coachman that will come back to that site? Or could be back in the site?
Yeah, I would say no more than 20 vehicles. The major, yeah, the majority of our vehicles are held by our, our chauffeurs.
So they take them home every night?
Correct.
Can you describe the vehicles?
Uh, the vehicles are sedans, SUVs, vans, and buses.
Any stretch, stretch limos?
No, unfortunately, the stretch limos are, they've gone out of style. We get calls for stretch limos once in a while for like, sweet 16s and stuff, but we kinda shy away from that, especially with that horrific accident that happened in New York. It's just, you know, we're more corporate, we don't, we don't even like have party buses where, you know, we have forward-facing vehicles. It's just too much of a liability for us.
So you said that the drivers take the, the cars home. You mentioned sedans, SUV, and you also said buses?
Correct.
The buses be at the location? Or are they taking those home also?
Both, we have a mix. Yeah, sometimes they're parked at the corporation. For example, I mentioned BMS, the vehicles parked there. I mentioned Seton Hall University, the vehicles parked there. So we have various client, um, clients where we park the vehicles at their location because it's advantageous to just have the drivers go there.
Thank you.
We're showing two buses when, when we get to Mr. Walsh's testimony, he'll show you on the...
Thank you.
No further questions?
Could you describe the maintenance activities you anticipate?
Well, all of our maintenance is provided by third-party vendors. So our maintenance is done outside of our location. So we bring them to garages and mechanics and that type of stuff. It's, the onsite is more prep.
Okay, what is, what...
Prep is like vacuuming a car.
Is it cleaning the outside of the car?
Uh, no, it's, it would be that, like if someone, if a car goes out and there's, you know, you know, inclement weather, and someone steps inside, and they have to, you know, clean the vehicle, make sure the vehicle's up to a certain standard.
So it's not washing a vehicle from that site?
No, no.
Do you anticipate, there's, there's no water, running water at that site currently, correct?
There is not currently, no.
Do you anticipate adding running water to the site?
Um, I believe that's submitted in the plans.
We're, we are proposing adding some water to that, yes. And electricity.
What's the, I'm sorry. I was gonna ask what's the purpose of that, if, if you have outside locations to clean the cars?
Well, so for us, the most important thing is electricity, which has to do with, you know, if it's cold outside, so the guys aren't working in the cold. Water is something that we put on there. I mean, they have access to the office, so it's not like they're gonna be using the bathroom out there, so I don't think it's something that we have to have.
And your building doesn't anticipate having restrooms in it, correct? That's not...
No, no.
No, no, they, they go back to 99 Cherry Hill.
What is the purpose of having the building? What do you mean that?
It's exactly for what I had mentioned with respect to the inclement weather, having a vehicle, being able to pull a vehicle in there. If it's raining or if it's snowing, the guys have to be able to work. So now they're not able to do that.
Okay. Do you have any other questions of this one?
No further questions.
Is, is somebody gonna explain the building?
Yes.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Please come forward. Before you talk, give us your name and address.
So it's Patrick Lynch. I live on 9 Homer Street in Parsippany, which is behind my house is where this is going to be. So I'm just wondering, is it, it's actually gonna be less vehicles that are gonna be on the property than, than are there now? Because you just said there's only about 20. I've got pictures of probably 50.
Please don't, don't test, don't testify, just...
Ask a question.
Ask the question.
Is there gonna be less vehicles moving forward on the property?
I, that mic should work.
So, current? Try this.
So currently, there are some vehicles that are in the process of being sold. So there's vehicles without plates, and we're in the process of selling those vehicles. So maybe that's what the gentleman is referring to.
What is your testimony that the maximum you anticipate is 20 vehicles on this property?
Any other questions by the public? Please come forward. If you wanna ask a question, stand up and come forward.
I'm getting there.
Okay, you can try. No, we got a long night, don't worry about it. Just give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Sabanor. I live at 3 Homer Street. I'm the owner of the home, and this property is right in back of us. My question is, I'm hearing vague numbers of the quantity of cars. I'm concerned about that. So, it's 20 limos and... So it's 20 limos and then like how many buses and how many SUVs? Can I ask that?
Well, I think they stated that it's 20 in total, isn't it? Wasn't that the testimony? Yes, no? 20 in total? No?
He's talking about the utilization on the lot. I think it might be better if we save this question for Mr. Walsh. And he's delineated parking on that lot. It'd be kind of an apples to apples type of comparison. He'll be the next one.
Do you understand, there's going to be a professional who will talk about the site. So then at that point, either we'll get our answer or we'll ask more questions.
Okay. So am I allowed to ask a question about environmental impact or no? I, I don't know about the proceedings. I don't know how they go.
Not this witness.
Not the right witness. Probably not the right witness.
All right, because I was concerned with like oil coming out of the cars, like underneath and getting washed out into like the streams and things like that.
Please, please don't testify. This is a time for asking questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was my question.
Thanks.
You'll have time on that one.
Any other member of the public who has a question to ask, to ask this witness? Question? Please come forward. Don't just raise your hand, ladies and gentlemen. When I say come on up, okay?
My name is Peter Chickleoni. I live at 13 Homer Street, behind the area there. My question is in regards to the shed. I got the notice that there was going to be a shed. Now we're talking about a garage. Can we discuss or find out what the size of this garage and height would be?
We're going to have a witness that's going to testify on the statement. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else, come on up.
Well, my name is Rose from 11 Greschen Street. And, well, two questions. Could we move this over so then people can also see it? Because we can't see anything of what you're speaking about.
But he didn't testify on this matter.
He didn't testify tonight yet. But I would recommend that if you can't see, come forward. Nobody on this board will bite you, I promise you. So if you have trouble, if you're all the way in the back and you can't see what's going on, there's ample seats, there's seats over there on the side. We'll, we'll try to have them tilted a little bit when, when he.
The question that I had was also that was mentioned that the two buildings, 99 and 119, have very low tenancy right now. And so why is it that we're using this parking area instead of the other parking spaces that are totally available? Because those buildings are not being used.
We'll talk about that with a different witness. Mr. Cartagena.
Anyone else here?
My name is Sigmund Balaban, 10 Greschen Street, Parsippany. This might be the wrong question for this gentleman. I'll take my chances. You seem very thorough in your presentation. I'd like to know why the entire neighborhood was not notified of your arrival. Like letters were sent out only to two houses.
Well, there's only, they're only required to send houses, sent to resident, or sent to property owners within 200 feet of the proposed application variance, okay? So if you're more than 200 feet away, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. O'Neill, that's what you did, right?
Just 200 feet.
Just 200 feet.
And we published the notice.
And it gets published in the paper also.
Okay, but the entire community is affected by the flow of traffic?
I, I don't have, I don't have any control over how notification is done. That's, it's in the state law? State law.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, but not okay.
Well.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Any other members of the public? Next witness, Joseph.
Thank you.
Raise your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you state your names, tell your last name?
Robert E. Walsh, W-A-L-S-H. 8 Ridgedale Ave, Cedar Hills, New Jersey. Chief Civil and Environmental Engineer for EI Associates.
Could you give the board, please, the benefit of your experience?
Yes, licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner. I prepared the plans that will be presented tonight for the application. And I believe I presented before the board, before, certainly the planning board in Parsippany.
And you've been previously qualified as an engineer?
Yes.
He's going.
It's good.
Okay, Mr. Walsh. We've punted a couple of questions to you because Mr. Cartagena was talking about operations on site and the number of cars that they expect operation to come on and off the site. But you've prepared an exhibit showing the number of cars that are actually provided in lease to be accommodated on that lot. Can we go over that?
Sure, I'm just going to refer to the first exhibit. And I don't know if you want to number these. There, there have been some slight revisions to this. Only in that this previously had a planning board as the signature block. We changed it to zoning board.
I guess that's a new exhibit, that A1.
So A1, C00 will be A1. And basically, the development consists of two building lots with two separate principal buildings. Lot 16 is, occupies the southern portion of the entire site, which consists of the two buildings. Lot 1601 is the site that the applicant is occupying. I think the application said roughly 5,500 square feet they're occupying in that building. And the area where they're going to park the vehicles and construct the garage is located in the southern portion of the overall property on Lot 16. So, and that lot is basically underutilized and is at the southern portion of the overall property. So that's C01, also our exhibit A1.
Now, I'm going to. Walsh, could you stand back a little bit as you're.
Sure.
As you're blocking. Even though there's no one moving up forward in the room, this nice lady has, so why don't you show her?
So the ones, the one plan that we have here has red marks on. Is that, is that where parking is going to be?
Yes, drawing C01 shows the red vehicles in it. Those are 12, 28 foot long mini buses. I don't know how many passengers. I have that information somewhere in my paperwork. We also show adjacent to that, two vehicles which are located between the proposed 36 by 36 by 15 foot high shed or garage, if you will. Though that is described as a 39 foot long minibus. And then finally, we have two of the largest vehicles that'll be on site are the motor coach buses. So that's, those are the vehicles that we're proposing to place on the site that exceed the normal parking lot striping. Now, there, there are, as the applicant stated, cars that they would use to, you know, just like a regular trip to the airport or something like that. Regular sedan sized vehicles. And they would occupy the other spaces that are not going to be altered at all.
So can you, can you tell me either exactly or approximately the distance from the edge of the parking spaces that you're going to be using to the property, property line?
This is a 50 scale drawing. And it's got to be approximately 100 feet to the nearest property line. And it's a fully wooded area with many deciduous.
So 100 feet, at least 100 feet before you hit somebody's property?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I see the reds and all the other colors. And then to the left of that, you have all these proposed EV charging stations.
The EV charging stations are proposed on Lot 16 and are located in an area, it says four proposed EV parking spaces at this location. And there's another location.
Just to the left of your red markings there, sir?
And, yes, right. And then six here, so for a total of 10.
These are in connection with this business?
Yes.
Yeah, it's for storage of, specifically for that.
You mentioned when you were starting out that the lease specifies the number of vehicles that can be on the property?
I'm not aware of what's stated in the lease.
It specifies the number of spaces that can be modified, which is what I'm trying to get to. We're adjusting 60 of the spaces.
60, 60.
Right, 60 of the spaces because of the larger vehicle. So.
Spaces and vehicles aren't the same, though. We're not going to have 60 vehicles.
No, because they're, they're larger vehicles. But we're still in compliance with parking regulations. There's excess parking on the site for both buildings.
So if you had two spaces and one of these vehicles 28 feet long, they'd be using two spaces?
Correct.
So we're going to be restriping.
Is that what C01 depicts?
Yes, although we did not show the relocate, restriping of those spaces. We just showed how the actual size of the vehicles would fit within those spaces. And in our parking calculation, we showed the reduction in number of spaces.
The testimony of your client was it was 20, 20 vehicles would be peak.
That's about right.
Mr. O'Neill, if, if the applicant's offices were in this building?
In what building?
On the other lot.
What, what number building is this?
He's running.
They're in 99.
And what building is this? This is 1, 119?
This is the lot with 119.
It's a different lot?
This is, this is, street number is 99 for the one where the applicants will be occupying. And 119 is the one for Lot 16. That's the one closest to Cherry Hill Road.
Different, different, different building?
Different, different lots. They'd be, it'd go to permanent.
I got the two different lots.
Well, maybe a minor site plan for restriping the parking lot.
But there wouldn't be any variances required? The only reason you're here is because of the two buildings. If it was one building.
The lots weren't merged. For whatever reason, these are separate lots and the.
Oh, it's a lot that's separate from the buildings?
No, the buildings are on separate lots. It's a unified complex, but it's on two lots.
Okay.
Now, help me here.
Sure.
I clearly see Lot 411, Lot 1601 and Lot 411, Lot 16, okay? Those are, then the red stuff here in the other part down there, what are they on? What lot and block are they on?
Okay, let me show you, let me show you something. This is the property line that separates the two.
If I could just cut you off. How about you answer the question eventually?
Okay, so what was the question? I'm sorry.
Which lot is the parking lot?
So this stuff is separated out?
16.
This is inside of that Lot 16.
Correct.
And where is their, what lot is their offices on?
1601.
Now show where the lot is.
Brian said north of 119, which is Lot 16 building. And then goes in between the two principal buildings and then runs parallel to the south side of the 199, Lot 1601. And then it runs along the center line of the main driveway that loops through the site. And then it runs along the southern part of the eastern parking lot that's associated with 1601. So this southern part, the, the lot is kind of elongated going east to west relative to Cherry Hill Road.
Mr. Walsh, why would you not have this and a little insert inside that lot so we could understand it? I mean, it looks like a totally separate place. You're saying that is within that lot? I, I, I don't get it. I, I guess I'm getting it now, but I don't get why we can't see that visually here.
Well, the line is on the plans.
Pardon me?
The, the line is on the plans.
The line is on?
The lot line. Line with bearing and distances on the.
I got that, Joe. I'm like, okay.
I think what you're probably talking about is the planning exhibit, which just shows the lot line, which I'm getting to.
Okay, good, thank you, sir.
So I have a, now, you're, we were talking about water potentially being brought up to the garage?
Yes, we're running electric out there and for the purposes of maintenance between trips, like vacuuming and stuff. It was, we're proposing to run a wanted floor, water line out there for just general maintenance, a hose, bib and. But it's not for a car wash per se. They're not going to be washing cars out there. But it's just to have water for the purposes of having water relative to maintaining a vehicle in between trips.
Yeah, I spilled my coffee. The car, the van comes back, they can clean that up.
Right.
But it's not set up for a car wash.
No lavatory, which would need a waistline, no bathrooms.
So there would be no need to conduct the exterior washing of vehicles at the site?
That was the testimony and there's no plan to do that.
So there would be no issue with respective potential runoff from washing of vehicles?
Correct.
That's exactly why.
Okay. Would that potentially create any environmental issues with the stream located on the site? So if they don't conduct that activity, there's no potential for runoff into that stream?
Correct.
From them?
From them.
Not to say there might be runoff from somebody else. But they will not create any runoff?
There's no activity in that lot that's going to cause any runoff that's going to trigger an environmental impact.
Correct.
And did you, did you actually examine that issue as part of your review of this application?
Yes.
Great.
Do you have any more questions?
I have no more questions for them.
Any, any questions by the board of this witness?
I skipped something, I can see.
Any questions?
Mr. Walsh or not that?
Oh, yes, the shed. I know Mr. Chadwick had concern that the garage building was not detailed enough. We, we have, I guess this will be exhibit A.
A2.
No, it's different. A2, I think we're only up to.
A2.
A2? Yeah, I think A2.
This is a manufacturer's cut sheet in it. We're proposing a building that's 36 by 36 by 15. That plan, and we basically put the cover sheet of that pre-engineered building on the plans on drawing C02. And you'll note that that building calls for a 16 foot high to the gable and 20 foot, you know, and some change to the ridge. And we took that off the plan. That came from the manufacturer, it's a standard building. And what the applicant is proposing is something that stays below the 15 feet. I think there's an ordinance requirement that anything in a residential zone, accessory buildings in a residential zone or a business zone, I don't know whether the ROL qualifies as a business zone, but the maximum height for the accessory structure is 15. So we're going to comply with that.
You don't need any variance for that, so you're there.
Right, there's no variances associated with this.
And the color on the cover sheet is roughly the color that would be selected?
I think so, but there's a standard manufacturer's color range. Maybe the applicant can answer that better than I can.
The principal buildings on the site are?
Masonry, exterior.
Yeah, stuck up there, right.
And this, this shed or building will be located on Lot 16?
Correct.
With all of this other parking that we see in red?
Yes, but that's just asphalt paving. I think what paints the picture better, the, the planner has some aerial bird's eye view.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
That'll be better for, you know, photographic representation.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I see.
And the last exhibit I have is just CO2, which you have. And what I've done is, I think Greenman Peterson had requested that additional large bus maneuvers be added to the plan. So we have plan number one, plan number two, which shows a vehicle getting in and out of that rear lot, the largest vehicle being the bus, coach bus. And we demonstrated that it can get in and out of there. And the request was that we show some truck maneuvers, excuse me, bus maneuvers from the entrances, that Cherry Hill Road. Here we have the southwest. On plan number three, we have the southwest entry lane with a bus maneuver. Plan number four, which was added, shows the northwest ingress and egress lanes. number four, which was added, shows the northwest ingress and egress lanes. And then finally, we showed rather than just the coming from the southern entrance and going into the parking lot and then leaving, as shown in plans one and two, we've added, uh, the alternative, what, if somebody came in the northern entrance, uh, from Cherry Hill Road, they could also access the parking area where the, where the vehicles would be stored. And, and I think there was a request that we put the planometric template rather than just the bus profile on the plan. So that's what we've done.
So, Mr. Walsh, uh, we will submit these plans for review. You've marked them as exhibits, but if the board sees fit to approve this application, we'll submit this. For further comments from the engineer, satisfy any of his concerns. But basically, there's no problem on any of these turns. That's really just something that needs to be confirmed.
Correct.
No further questions from the board?
Any other questions on the board? Any members of the public have any questions of Mr. Walsh on the testimony he's given? Please understand, you're going to question him on the testimony given.
Kathy Lynch, I live at 9 Homer Street, directly above where they want to place it. I'm a little confused with this testimony here. I'm very familiar with the area back there, the 119 building and the 99 building, and there's a lot of...
Can you speak into the mic?
There's a lot of...
Is it muted, maybe? That little thing at the top, make sure it's flipped up?
Sure.
At the top?
It was off.
Oh. Right, give her one of the other mics.
I've lost the other one. Where's the other one? Oh, you've got it.
Oh, I gotta give you so many, Joe.
Again, Kathy Lynch, 9 Homer Street. I'm very familiar with the corporate area over there because I live directly behind it. And I hear how you're trying to get an understanding of what the actual land looks like. I'm going to ask him right now.
Ask a question.
My question is, you keep referring to lot 16, which I believe is that whole area back there, where all those current vehicles are currently parked. What lot are they currently on?
16.
Okay, so this, what you are proposing is not in the area where those vehicles are currently being housed, all 60 of them?
I don't think, I'm not sure what you're talking about, quite frankly.
Right now, there are over 60 vehicles being housed in an area when you come in off of Cherry Hill Road into 11999 parking lot. Those vehicles are being housed next to a salt shed. All those vehicles that are currently in there, you're proposing a different location, not where those cars currently are. Your, your rendition here looks as though it's going to the back of this huge corporate lot.
I have to, I have to cut you off because...
Whoa, slow down.
We, we don't know what you're talking about.
Are they his, are they his, are they...
I have pictures of Royal Coachmen.
Well, that's fine. See, if she's going to put on evidence, that's fine, but we can't answer your question, so...
Okay, but if we're proposing a site, I'm sure that the gentlemen have walked in the area and seen what's currently on the lot. So right now, there are over 60 vehicles housed on that lot. And I'm asking, are you proposing this in that same location? Because you are talking about Royal Coachmen buses and cars that are currently there.
We're talking about in that lot. Do you see that exhibit on the floor there?
Yes, I do, and I live at block 411, lot 66, and I see where the red is. And I'm asking you, that is being proposed at the back of the lot, but you currently have 60 or so vehicles being housed somewhere else. So I'm asking, that is all considered lot 66?
We, we don't know, I'm not saying you're incorrect.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we don't know. So...
I don't understand how you could propose something, but you don't know what's currently going on on the lands?
Because we're only in temporary offices there. Nothing's been approved.
But when you make a site plan, do you not walk around and determine what is currently on the lot?
This is an active parking...
I walked there yesterday, I will adjust this gentleman. I walked there yesterday, and there were over 60 vehicles. I watched those people going in and out of those cars throughout the day. So that testimony before us that there were 20 cars there, I have pictures in my phone.
They said a maximum of 20.
Okay, there was, he said a maximum of 20.
The gentlemen say, said would be sold.
Okay, so I am asking, they are not proposing it in that area. They're proposing a whole totally different area. So are those cars going to remain there as well?
Excuse me a minute. I, Mr. Walsh didn't testify on that part of the part, but I think back to the initial testimony, Mr. O'Neill, there's confusion on how many cars are there, okay? Uh, the testimony was there's 20 cars. We have residents here saying they have pictures and indications and more. Now, we understand you have some vehicles there that you're trying to sell. Is that correct? They're there now.
About 20 vehicles.
So, okay, I, I got...
But here's the thing, this is an active parking lot. And there's nothing preventing people and the landlord from doing whatever he wants in the parking lot. We're here for this application.
That's not true, Joe.
Yes, it is.
You can't set up a fore sale lot in your parking lot.
I believe you need some kind of temporary application.
Excuse me, excuse me. He's, they're allowed to park cars in the parking lot.
Correct.
They're allowed to park cars overnight in the parking lot.
If they are a tenant on the site, they can park cars there. They've got a temporary lease, but they needed a use variance to bring the limousines here, which is why you're here.
Right.
The fact that he brought 60 cars down is going to use it as...
He has not. That's what I keep trying to tell you. That's not them. We don't know what that is.
Oh.
That's an active parking lot.
That's somebody else's car.
I don't know if they've contact, you know, just not to throw a client under the bus, but if Paul Miller has got something going on on the lot...
There's nothing to do with Royal Coachmen. Wait, excuse me one second. You say there were 60 cars there.
I counted, there's over 10.
Did you in any way determine that those 60 cars are owned by Royal Coachmen?
A lot of them say Royal Coachmen on them. I have the pictures, you can zoom in on them.
A lot, 60 or a lot?
There's tons of them, tons of them.
Are you saying he doesn't?
She's, she's borderline...
More than 20?
So let's stick with the question.
Yeah, I think that it would be bet, you know, his testimony is he's got 20 cars on that lot right now.
And there are other cars with Royal Coachmen, but they have no plates.
That's what he's talking about.
Are both buildings, are there other tenants in there, in the number 99?
Can I just clarify though, these cars are not...
Excuse me, please, you cannot testify. You will be given the opportunity to testify at a later time. Not now. That was your point to... All right, well, we've got, do you have any other questions for Mr. Walsh?
I have a question. Um, you said that there will be probably no water, and you said that there won't be any environmental concerns, because the brook is running right behind that area there. There won't be any runoff from fuel and stuff coming out from these cars that would run?
It's a parking lot. So whatever is approved as a parking lot, it will function as a parking lot. There's no environmental use, activity, stored products that would, uh, do anything environmentally to affect what's already been...
These are all going to be licensed vehicles, road-ready vehicles, no wrecks, no...
No, it's already been testified. No repair, work being done there, no change, or changing of vehicle fluids or anything like that, so the answer's no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here you go, Mr. Walsh. Sigmund Ballaban, 10 Greschen Street. I hope I'm staying on point this time. If I'm not, I'm sure you'll stop me. Um, you indicated that the entrance to the parking lot will be off Cherry Hill Road, correct? Okay, two of them, yes. Okay. Since we're a residential community, how are they getting there?
This is the building.
Uh, your organization. In other words, are they going to be driving through the hills of Troy?
Now, they'll be going from Cherry Hill Road into the site, exiting back onto Cherry Hill Road. That's the access to the...
Okay, so the only, only route you're going to use is Cherry Hill Road?
I mean, from 287 or, you know, whatever.
What about locally?
I, I don't think any driver of these vehicles has any desire to go down Greschen Road or fall into the home room.
I can't, I can't speak.
You know, if, we're, I'm going to cut you off there, but because if an employee of bear needs to be picked up at the direction of bear, then the vehicle's going to go to his home and pick him up. I mean, there's no restriction like that. But it's not part, there's no interaction right now between the site and the neighborhood behind.
Right now.
By any road link. And we're not proposing any changes at all.
But you don't, you don't know that?
Yes, I do know that. We are not proposing any changes that would interact with that neighborhood at all. Not part of this application, no reason to do it, don't want to do it.
Okay. I know you don't want to do it, but I just want to reconfirm that we will not have traffic going through the hills of Troy.
Yeah, that's right. You're not. There's no...
Under any circumstance?
No, unless, you know, that...
Unless a pickup.
Yeah, someone must be...
Well, under any circumstances, I don't know if you can...
No, you can't.
You know, Cherry Hill Road, there's a massive accident, and they can't get out of the parking lot. It's very possible that to have the only egress maybe to go through hills of Troy.
There's no way into hills of Troy, is there? Yeah, if there's an accident on Cherry Hill Road, enjoy your cup of coffee because you can't get off the lot.
Well, they can get into 202.
Yeah, but they'd have to get up on the 202. We're not, uh, we're not doing that at all. The site is not being changed.
Okay.
Except for restriping where the parking...
My concern, respectfully, is we are a residential area.
Excuse me, questions?
Okay.
Questions?
We can talk about that.
I'll give you a chance to testify later, okay? Just ask questions. Let's move this along. Do you have any other questions?
Okay, the question I had, I nestled from 11 Greschen Street. Um, there are three buildings. One is 99 and 119. And then there's the other one, it's 119. And I can't visual, I mean, visualize the one in the corner that's closest to Greschen and Cherry Hill Road is number 119.
Well, there are...
199 on either.
199. So that little, 199.
Yeah, that's not part of the...
That's the property. It's in this proximity location, south of the entrance into the site.
So what's confusing by looking at this is like those two buildings, 99 and 119.
Here.
The only way you'd get there is through Cherry Hill Road. But if you're coming up from the north, I mean, from the southbound, how do you get to there?
We can only access the site from Cherry Hill Road.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the...
Well, I'm, I'm speaking about Cherry Hill Road.
That's the next...
The turning maneuver to get a bus. You can't make a U-turn.
They're not changing. Whatever the allowed and turning maneuvers are for traffic on Cherry Hill Road will change.
Yeah, we're, we're not adding any parking.
It's just that, that little bridge there that connects the 99 to that little alcove area, which is like really houses a lot of parking spaces, is way, it's not even walking distance, really.
Excuse me, what is your question?
My question is how come you're not using the other parking spaces that are over there?
That's between the applicant's personal place and the...
Our understanding is that's not available for this purpose.
Any other questions of Mr. Walsh? I don't see any.
Okay, Sabanura, 3 Homer Street again. Um, did I hear correctly that there was a 39-foot bus?
Yes, 39-foot mini-bus, two of them.
39 feet mini-bus or not is a big bus, right? Can you tell me the sizes of the other buses and how many there are?
There are two 45-foot long coach buses.
Okay.
And then the other ones are more like, I think, let me use the proper terminology, long mini-buses, which are 20 feet long.
Okay. Question is, would you need to submit anything to NJDOT for the turning radiuses of these buses, or no? No?
I think he just discussed that, didn't he? Didn't he just answer that? You're not, this, this is an approved lot.
Yes.
Approved ingress and egress, correct? Whatever requirements, whatever...
Well, the board's, yeah, the board's engineer asks for, for exactly what she's talking about, turning radiuses, which is, I think, where she's going. And, uh, that's the exhibit that he put up there. Satisfying. So we're proving that we don't need to do anything to the parking lot.
Any other members of the public? I hear an unseen none. Do you have any other witnesses, Mr. O'Neill?
I do, mine planted.
Your planted?
Yes.
Okay. Is he here?
Yes, he is.
Okay, good. It's good news.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, the whole proof, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your names, by last name, please.
Alexander Doherty, D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y.
Mr. Doherty, could you give the board, please, the benefit of your experience?
Certainly. I testified in front of the board, uh, previously. I'm a professional planner, licensed PP as well as AICP, good and current. I testified its capacity on a weekly and daily basis here on behalf of McDonald Associates at 101 Travolta Avenue, Suite 1A of Morse Plains. You're on education?
I wanted to go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, four years?
Have you testified before?
Yes, a few times.
You've, submit him as a professional planner for the application, is he... In fact, you, you have examined the local ordinances and master plan?
Yes.
You've had a chance to examine this application as been to the site?
Yes.
Wonder if you can go ahead and give us your conclusions about the interaction of this application and those standards?
Certainly. Um, earlier I, uh, picked up something, uh, Chairman was, uh, mentioning here. We, we do have two distinct, um, properties by lot and block. Characteristic wise, it looks like it's one large lot from the public realm. Indeed, there are two lots. We are here really on a technicality, and that's from section 430 dash 27, uh, zero, or, oh, I'm sorry, from the local ordinance. And I'll read that verbatim, uh, for the record. Parking provided on the same lots as main building. All street parking spaces for one and two families and multifamily dwellings shall be provided on the same lot as the main building. All street parking spaces for other uses shall be provided on the same lot as the main building to be served by such parking unless otherwise provided therein. Given this is two lots on a tax map, and the tenant is occupying the other structure, though this site is inter, interrelated and connected by virtue of the parking lot, it's two different lots, thus technically we need a variance. If he were to occupy an office space in the other building affiliated with that lot, we would not be here seeking, uh, what is a D1 use variance. So that's essentially what we're here for. Um, the exhibit packet we have before you, um, slide one, shows the overall campus, the commercial campus outlined in yellow. You'll see a white zigzag kind of line running through the middle. That separates the two lots. We have the site identified by the word "site" in yellow. That's the parking area. This is block 16, I'm sorry, lot 16. We are block, uh, 411. He is proposing to park his vehicles on lot 16. His office is located on lot 16.1, just on the other side of that, uh, white line.
And this four-sheet exhibit is A3, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. So with that being said, if you can see from this aerial here, it makes sense why the landlord, uh, has come to some agreement by virtue of parking his vehicles in this section. This part of the parking lot is kind of remote by itself. And we'll go through the exhibit packet on the next sheet. We have some drone footage that was taken, uh, earlier today. We can kind of see that remoteness, if you will, um, from what's actually out there today. So these are some of the vehicles that, uh, the residents are referring to, the larger buses. That's what was there today when we went out there with the drone. Uh, and then the yellow thing off in the background, you can kind of see on the next couple of slides, I believe that was when the residents was talking about the salt and the, um, the equipment. Yes, this parking area is located within that same, um, area that the salt and, and the, uh, salt, uh, salt piles or piles are, are located.
The township salt?
I'm sorry?
Is that township salt and piles?
I think it's the site salt. I don't know who owns that salt, but it's a, it's pretty big salt piles back there with that yellow, um, machinery.
There's nothing new with Royal Coachmen.
No, 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 no. So...
That's the property owner's story.
And is there any proposal to change that? And is there any proposal to change that in any way?
Well, it's not part of the application. We're going to be utilizing that for parking.
You're going to be utilizing the area where that salt?
It's not delineated parking, but.
So it's, if you look on slide four or page four, where the vehicles are kind of already affiliated on that aerial, that portion, and if you reflect back to the site plan, that portion off to the right is this area that we are proposing to modify the striping and now have the parking.
I think corrected, we do not have access to where that, in that aerial that salt is. I guess that's a front-end loader there.
Yeah, so it's going to be off to the right. You'll see a driveway aisle coming in that connects to the other parking lot, that little road that interconnects the two sites right there. Off to the right, right there, is the proposed parking and the re-striping. And if you look at slide four, and again, if you look back at the site plan, where you see those handful of black SUVs next to the patch of grass right there. That section right there, I believe it was four stalls, is the approximate size of this proposed shed or service structure. So it's going to be right there in the middle where those black vehicles are. And in this area here is the area that the tenant and the landlord have come to an agreement to park their vehicles. So essentially, we are here for a technicality because his office is in the other building, but he's giving him access from this remote parking area to park his cars kind of away from the larger parking lot.
And it's the placement of the shed, actually, or the garage. An accessory structure, which would not be a problem if it was all on the same lot.
Correct.
Which really brought this to head. You cannot place a structure without this approval.
So with that being said, I wanted to point out on the aerial four here, the parking lot is predominantly empty. As we've heard testimony, the buildings are, you know, low in tenancy. As a planner, the office market is pretty much shriveled up like a broom. We are repurposing a lot of these office buildings for multi-purpose use. Even some residential conversions are taking place across the state. So we have a parking lot, it's an underutilized parking lot. We have a land use that needs a parking lot. You know, it's kind of a, you know, an adaptive reuse of a parking lot, but it's not a fact that we're parking cars in a parking lot.
But if I understand correctly.
Yes.
Even reutilizing these particular parking places, there's still plenty of existing parking to accommodate the ordinance with respect to the parking required by that building.
So if we were to dedicate 60 spaces towards this use, this site is overparked by 61 spaces. So whether it's 60 vehicles or the 20 the applicant has testified to, this site is overparked by 61 spaces currently today. So if there was a resurgence in the office market in the next, you know, two months and this parking lot needed to be filled for the tenants that would occupy that building, technically, we are overparked by the local ordinance for office space and parking ratios. So with that being said, the D1 use variance to occupy parking off-site in the structure, the structure will come into light with the D1. But basically, what we have here is a technicality with the parking and the lots here. But we believe this application is straight down the middle. Advances purpose A, the project promotes the general welfare because the site is particularly suited for the use by virtue of its context. It is in the exact same business campus as the main use and its conditions. The target parking area is seldom ever used. As you can see, this area is further removed from the buildings. So we don't really park back here. With that being said, also advances purpose M, the project promotes the planning goal for efficient use of land because the site is completely, you know, underutilized as an existing parking area and requires very minimal site alterations. As you heard from the engineer and the tenant, the applicant, I'm sorry. We like to have water out there, we don't need it. There's very minimal site alteration here. It's for vehicles, it's really, and cleaning the interiors of the cars. There is no tree clearing, there's no physical expansion of the parking lot. There's no roads being paved here going to other neighborhoods. We are just utilizing existing asphalt as it is for parking of the limo service. The advanced purpose G, the project promotes the planning goals for variety of land uses in appropriate locations because it benefits a permitted use that services the public with limo driver service, catering to businesses and the employment center of Morse County. We have shuttle services, the airport transportation, corporate transportation, to meeting events, et cetera. Purpose J, the project promotes good planning goals for the conservation of energy resources and viable natural resources in the state to avoid the degradation of the environment through improper land use. So we have that because we also are going to propose a few EV make-ready stalls. With that, it's a new state requirement. We are not going to, you know, pave over virgin land. We're going to use this existing parking lot, re-stripe it. We're going to throw some EVs, charging stations in there by way of the new state legislation that came out. EV stalls need to be put in when we alter and create new parking stalls and new projects coming online. So by virtue of this existing parking lot not having EV, we want to put EV there and kind of bring this parking lot into compliance.
And more importantly, Royal Coachman is exploring using EVs.
More energy-efficient vehicle transportation, yes.
Will those EV charging stations be available to the public?
I don't believe it's the public.
Absolutely not.
If you get the public's back here, it's just for the corporate campus, if you will. Particularly in this case, the campus is vacant. It would be probably just used just strictly coach.
If it's not used by Royal Coachman, it's going to be locked, so it won't be used by any kids deciding at night they want to charge moms' tests in there.
When we look at the negative criteria, I believe, based on the testimony you've heard before, there's no substantial detriment to the public, the surrounding neighborhood. The use will easily integrate with the site. There's no interference with circulation, other parking conditions in that regards. The location's remote, it's well-screened. The accessory building will not require, you know, any outside sewage in that regards and infrastructure being needed on the town. When we look at this, it's really a weather protective area for their staff, for their vehicles to come in. As you heard, knock the snow off, clean out the inside, wipe down the dash, anything on the carpet, vacuum up, get out. There's just no maintenance, no fluids being changed, you heard, no repairs to the vehicles. There won't be any salvage vehicles stored back here. It's simply wipe down the interiors, keep it clean, keep it fresh, have the guys available out of the weather. As we heard, the sewer, the water, all that. We don't need the water, it'd be nice to have it, but the bathrooms are inside in that regards. This is really just an ability to get out of the weather and prep the interiors of the car. When we look at this, the 2020 master plan encouraged creative ways to repurpose Parsippany's office sites, and that's right from your master plan. We have a lot of office corporate campuses. This is not, you know, just unique to Parsippany, but it is a trend that a lot of municipalities are facing. So we have a big area used for parking. It's underutilized for parking. We're going to repurpose that and park limo service vehicles here. And it's fairly well-suited for vehicle parking. It is a parking lot. I did hear some concerns about the environmental concerns in that regards. There's nothing that would stop a leaky oil, a car with some leaky oil coming, you know, if, in the heyday, when this office complex, you know, there's nothing here that would be substantially detrimental than what is already permitted to be here, which is a parking lot full of cars.
Except Alex, that our client, if the car's leaking oil, it's taking it to the shop.
Yeah, he's, yes.
So it's not really going to be a concern. These are commercial vehicles.
High-end commercial vehicles, limos, buses, you know, SUVs and, you know, town cars. You know, this operation is very much a reputation-based operation and enjoyment. So you're in the vehicle during transportation, it needs to be cleaned. If somebody, your house, your site, your office, and he's leaking oil in transmission, you're probably not going to call. Right. It's an image both inside and out. With that being said, I think when we look at this application, you know, collectively, the proposal for the permitted use and the associated parking for its commercial fleet, there really is a technicality. The parking is on the other lot and his office is in the other building. Again, the sites are interconnected, it's one larger campus. I believe the statutory criteria for relief will be met and approval will be warranted.
I just have one question.
Yes.
The variance is being caused because the spaces are being assigned at least, basically, to Royal Coachman, as is the construction of the garage or shed, correct?
Correct.
This is an open parking lot, so anyone can really go park there at any time.
Correct. So the fact that we're assigning this and we're kind of putting this.
Yeah, that's the distinction.
Yeah, that's the distinction. If you didn't assign this parking lot to him or give him some stalls and say, hey, you know, if the municipality will let you put up that structure, you know, for your guys, you know, wipe your cars down. If that wasn't the case, there's nothing really stopping him from parking the cars back here anyways. It's the fact that he's being assigned these stalls and his office is in the other building.
Thank you, no further questions.
I have a couple, please.
Yes.
So your pictures and your drones are very helpful to me. I'm going to start on page one.
Yeah.
And the site we're looking at is clearly delineated. And we have residents here that live on Homer Street and Grecian Street. Will their site, what will they be seeing any different when this stuff goes in than they can see right now? Apparently, nothing. It'll be the same thing.
We're not taking any trees down.
No trees down. And the building that is going in, the shed, is going to be up in the top right corner of that site, okay? So the homeowners along there, are they going to be able to see that shed now that it's not there now?
I believe the specs for the shed are pretty small.
Yeah, they are.
I don't have the height offhand.
There's a lot of screening back there.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. So all those trees stay there, all the residents, there's nothing coming down, right?
Right.
All right. The other question I have is, with the current photographs, thank you very much. So the vehicles that are already parked there are Royal Coachman vehicles, most of them, in your drone picture, okay?
Yep.
And you have obviously some buses and stretched limos and all that kind of stuff in there, right?
There's 16 vehicles there. I don't see a stretched limo. I do see vans.
Yeah, okay, yeah, some vans there. Those are probably the ones we're trying to sell. But it doesn't matter. The point I'm asking, trying to get at, the driveway down through the middle here. So everything where the salt thing is, that is not included in this property.
No, that's not part of the lease.
Not part of the deal at all, okay? So it's just the right after. And then how do they get from Cherry Hill back to here? Can you? Yeah, I see that driveway right there. Okay. So they go all the way out through here?
Yeah.
So they go through all through the property?
This is the salt area?
Yeah.
He's only allowed to have this side of the.
No, I got that.
Did it hit yours?
How did it?
So there's a drive aisle and there's, this goes out to the main road.
That goes out.
And then it circulates to the other lot.
Okay.
The end is really up at the top.
Yeah, and there's another one right there. So there's two points to access. This lot has access and the other lot has that. 16 is 16.1.
So based on the testimony, if I can understand.
Not behind the residents.
No, this lot, this is just a block in.
No, there's no, there's no access.
So right now, because that area that we're talking about is a public parking lot right now. When this is approved, if approved, it would not allow for any public to park in that area anymore.
Well, it'll be reserved for this.
It's reserved for the tenant, yes.
Okay, so that basically says no other parking from any area there. So that should reduce the number of cars being parked back there, I would assume.
I would assume as well.
By 60 spaces.
By 60 spaces, okay, yeah.
He's given up those 60 spaces for Coachman, but he only needs about 20 vehicles back there.
Okay.
We probably correct, this is not a public parking.
Well, it's for.
It's a private lot and it's controlled by the owners of the property.
Yes, but it's open to the public. There's no gate, it's open to the public. It's for these, yeah, I didn't mean to say it's a municipal park. No, I definitely did not mean to say that.
Couple of questions, are you going to put any lights with this building?
There's no changes, there's lights already back there.
So there's no new lights?
No new lights, no new nothing.
Signage, you going to have any new signage?
I don't think that's anticipated.
I don't think it's needed, right? Signage, I didn't notice for signage.
Your customers aren't going back there.
No.
No, it's very remote, as you can see.
The buses themselves, do they have that beep every time they back up?
It is an OSHA requirement.
OSHA.
The answer is yes, they do.
We can't take that, we can't shut it up. It's OSHA requirement.
You didn't submit a report, though, right? Just your testimony?
No.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything.
You have a question by the board?
One question.
Yeah, sure, Bernie, go ahead.
Just for the record, how many parking spaces will the garage be eliminating? Four spaces.
Four, two deep, so total of eight?
No, four.
Yeah, it's four left and right, and then the other stall behind it, so eight in total, but it's only four wide.
So that brings you down to 53-plus, right? No, that's the whole, that's included in the. No, but you've lost these parking spaces.
Well, he's given them 60 as part of a contract for the tenant, but we don't need all 60 from what the applicant testified to. So eight of them, he wants to put the structure on for his guys to stage his interior of the car.
Are you familiar with the contract?
No, that's what I just heard the testimony for.
You nearly know, you don't know.
I have 60 spaces for this application, that's what my office asks. That's our understanding, the office is 60 spaces are that right-hand side.
What do we get on that? I think we have a limit of the number of vehicles that will be on this site as part of this application.
Yeah, sure.
And we have a description of what they might be.
Exactly right.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of the planner on this testimony given this evening? No questions.
I have no further witnesses.
You want to hold off summation until we hear from members of the public?
I would like to, yes, sir.
Okay. At this point in this evening's meeting, I'm going to ask members of the public if they would like to come up and testify. And you will be put under oath, just like all the witnesses were. And once again, you're going to state your name and your address. And the first thing I'm going to say, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? If you're in opposition to this application, this is your opportunity to come up and speak. I hear none and see none. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in favor of this application? I hear none and see none. That closes that part of the meeting. Are we in a position to go into conference tonight with six people? You know what I mean?
I think so.
I have no problem with it. Summation?
Well, I'll rely on the application as presented. We think it's a relatively straightforward application for utilization of existing parking with no changes to the parking lot. I'll thank the board and the members of the public for coming out for this application. Bye.
Do I have a motion to enter conference?
So, Mr. Burke.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Thank you, Mr. Burkeless.
I think this is a de minimis application. And it's only here by the happenstance that whoever created these two buildings is stupid enough to put them on two lots.
I think John was the planner of when they built these buildings.
Beats me. Does he remember doing it?
You think he does?
Actually, I think these buildings were.
They predated you?
Predated me.
God, they're really old.
So anyway, I have no objection to what is proposed. And the stipulations and conditions that the applicant has agreed to, I think, are reasonable. So I'll be voting yes.
Scrutiny?
Yes. I was concerned about the parking, but from the pictures that were given to us, I appreciate them very much. And I think it made it clear that there is sufficient parking and I also will be voting yes.
Mr. Petty?
I think I would yes, too. I just have one question. I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to the question that I would like to find out on the building. The building is constructed new right now. I just wanted to understand why now? What's the purpose of bringing this new building for the prepping the vehicles? What?
In case it's raining or during the winter months, they want to stand inside under a shelter to clean out the vehicle.
Okay.
You know, to just.
To back in the wash of the vehicle.
It's, they're not washing it or anything, but they do need to vacuum and things like that. That's what the power is. And the electricity would help them do that.
Correct, so all these years, all this has been done in the naked weather?
Well, there's, my client isn't on, hasn't been on site until recently. So this was just a regular old parking lot.
Gotcha. Yeah, I guess.
I, yes. Mr. Ready?
Yeah, this is a reasonable application, uh, especially the applicant has office and is looking for additional parking next to it. So it is a kind of, uh, confusing, two lots in one thing, but, and there's no major changes in the, uh, they are looking for. And it is a pretty easy one to add some additional spaces. And the structure they are proposing is to make sure that in the winter time they can use it for, uh, for cleaning the cars or, or buses. So I'm in favor of this.
Stewards? Yeah, uh, first, I, I would, uh, compliment, uh, the testimony of the witnesses. I think they adequately answered most of all the concerns the residents had and the questions they had. I don't know, turned fully to their satisfaction, but we had nobody speaking opposition to the application, which I think is a tribute to the testimony given. Uh, I must say going in, that, uh, there were questions there, but they did a nice job. I also say Royal Coachman has been a wonderful, uh, company and resident, a business resident of, of Parsippany, uh, and this, I think, fulfills their business needs, so they can continue doing their business there, and I'll be voting in favor of the application. I appreciate knowing the public that came out tonight, and please don't take me being rude if I tried to keep you on point, that's the way these meetings have to go, okay? So, again, I apologize if I ruffled anybody's feathers. Um, I hope the public understands that this is, this is a, this isn't a, a variance that we're granting merely because of a lot line. If this was one, one big piece of property, none of us would be here tonight. So this board will look at, especially when we have applications where commercial property is boarding resi- residential property. I'm, I am very sensitive to that. But there's a lot of things that this board cannot correct. Can't correct things that happened fifty years ago, forty years ago, or because of, of a particular commercial, uh, property can do something. I understand there's an issue with the, with, um, an amount of salt that is stored outdoors in a, in a three-wall enclosure, and it can, there's concern that it's going to be leaching into the street, into the, to the stream. If this is a valid issue, you should take that up with the township engineer, mayor, the council, we can't do anything about it.
And it's not part of this application.
But it's not, but I, but I understand there is an issue, and I just want to tell them where they can go to get, hopefully get satisfaction.
Help office.
Yeah. Help office, yes. So I am in favor of the application. Uh, again, it, it's a good, it's a good business here in Parsippany, provides jobs, um, and so, um, I'll be voting in favor. Motion to go out of conference?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, we don't need to have him draft a resolution, do we? Just, we just go vote on something?
Yeah, it's pretty strict.
Can someone frame a resolution for tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one question, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Um, the application in its original form was inconsistent with respect to the water line. We've heard the applicant say, we'd like it, we don't need it, but I haven't heard yes or no. Does the board are going to allow it, or are we not going to allow it? Because, you know, I just need a definite onlet of fate of that water line.
You, you, you want the water line?
They do want the water line, yes.
And I don't think that's a problem for the board.
As, as long as, as long as there's no car washing, because that gets into our tier one, tier A.
Absolutely not.
You can't wash cars with a one-inch wall.
No, it's not that type.
So no.
Just the one-inch water line.
No exterior washing of vehicles.
Absolutely no exterior washing of vehicles.
Perfect, thank you.
We don't want to go there any more than you want.
Someone frame would be a condition of approval.
Yes, that is.
Someone frame a resolution so we can move on.
Application point three colon fifty-seven, Royal Coachman, ninety-nine and one-one-nine, Cherry Hill Road, block four-one-one, lots sixteen and sixteen point oh-one. Grant a preliminary and fine, and final major site plan slash deviance to construct garage and outdoor storage of vehicles, and there won't be any car wash.
Second one. Any discussion? Nora Cole, the role?
Mr. Burkelewicz.